Through that. Now, we are going to open our city council study session for November 19th. And again, I'm Vice Mayor Dennis Kavanaugh heading the meeting in place of Mayor Giles, who is absent and excused. The first item is to take action on the appointments to the Early Childhood Education Task Force, and Mr. Luna is going to be presenting to the council on this issue. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Kavanaugh. As many of you know, Mayor Giles has invited educational experts and community leaders to explore and study Mesa's response and delivery of pre-kindergarten offerings as well as offerings. Mayor Giles, along with civic leaders, meet quarterly to discuss educational issues through a series of educational roundtables. At one of these meetings, Dr. Cowan spoke to Mayor Giles about the critical need to address many of the issues related to children and our response to them as a community before they begin kindergarten. Here to speak on that issue is Dr. Michael Cowan, Mesa Public Schools Superintendent Tenet. Dr. Cowan, would you please come forward? Anyone? Thank you, Dr. Cowan.
Thank you. Good morning, City Council members. Vice Mayor Kavanaugh, congratulations, by the way, on your recognition and your early morning Saturday visit. I understand it was well received. Congratulations to that. Ladies and gentlemen, it's an opportunity to just visit with you today about some concerns we have regarding the constituency of our good city. And let me just kind of frame it like this. You know, there are several needs in education. As you can imagine, I could talk about budgets, I could talk about enrollments, I could talk about facilities, I could talk about a variety of different things. But the number one issue that's influencing the success of our children and ultimately the economic viability of our community is, can be framed in one word, and that's poverty, the influence of poverty. In the 28, 29 years that I've been with Mesa Public Schools, we have seen an increasing, a dramatically increasing number of schools that are considered Title I schools. That is a special education designation. And as you know, we receive funding in Mesa Public Schools for services to students, kindergarten through 12th grade. We have adult education, which we provide through grants and other sources of funding, and we have a little bit of preschool education funding available primarily for children who are identified with special education needs. But there is a gap of services for children, especially children who are living in poverty or in economically challenged situations that have a huge influence on Mesa Public Schools. For years, Mesa Public Schools has been recognized as one of the highest performing school systems in the state of Arizona, and we receive quite a bit of national recognition as well for the accomplishments of our students, of our staff, and the programs that we offer. We have, though, in reality, a substantive gap between our higher-performing children and a population, a subpopulation of children at the other end of that gap. And the reason that we have that gap, or one of the reasons that we have that gap, is because these children often come to us with deficit skills and abilities. And it is a significant challenge for us, because as you can imagine, if you are living in an economically challenged family, for whatever reasons, you are not often going to have the enriched experiences that you need to be able to prepare and engage in a very rigorous kindergarten program based on the new state standards that all the school districts in the state of Arizona are working with. So these children come in deprived of what many of you, in your homes and/or through your own personal experiences, experienced in a home environment that's enriched with literacy and exposure to information and experiences throughout their lives. So these children come into us, and we have data that supports that. Matter of fact, one of the things that we administer every year is the, it's an assessment called DIBELS, Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy. That is an assessment that measures the children's readiness for and attainment of basic literacy skills to help them be able to read. When we administer that test to our kindergarteners at some of our schools, not all of our schools, at some of our schools, those children don't score at the bottom of the scale on the performance of that test. They actually score below the bottom of that scale, indicating that they have not just deficit skills, but they have absence of literacy skills to help them be proficient. So Mesa Public Schools, owning the responsibility to do everything we can to help all children be successful, work dramatically to try to help these kids perform better on this test, thus being able to be competent in the very basic and essential skill of reading. What happens then is, at the end of the school year, we go off for vacation, and our kids leave us, and we prepare for the next school year. During that gap of time, those kids continue to experience the impact and influence of poverty, and they continue to slide down a little bit, while those kids who came into the schools within rich environments, what do you think they probably do during the summer? Well, they take advantage of the City of Mesa Library Reading Program. They go on vacations, they see and experience things in an enriched home environment. And so those kids, again, start out substantially higher than the children who are dealing with the challenges of economic difficulties in their home. And again, we play, we try to play catch-up while we try to advance the other population as well. And then multiply that out across 13 grade levels and 12 summers in between those 13 grade levels, and that gap continues to increase ever, ever broadening, ever-broadingly. So when you think about our community, one of the things that is a hallmark that we identify ourselves by amongst many, many things is a sound and solid educational system, offered by Mesa, offered by Gilbert Public Schools, offered by charter schools, offered by parochial and private schools and other neighboring school systems. My concern that as the demographics continue to change in our community, especially economic demographics, we are going to find that not the higher-performing children who are competitive at any institution after they leave high school, not only in the state but across the nation, but we will quickly become defined by the lower population of students, and we will find that our system flips. And what at one time has been not only a great hallmark of the system, where the community has a great deal of respect for what is done, but also expect for what is expected of our students, and the contribution that education makes to things like Mesa being identified as one of the top or the top city in the southwest to raise families, will become a challenge for us. So I spoke with the mayor about that gap between birth and kindergarten, which is really important for us to take a look at. If nothing else, to study it, to identify where we are with it, what its influences are in our community, what the trajectory of those children are as they move up through the system, and then hopefully back into our community as contributors to our economy and our society. And it seems to me that that's certainly a Mesa Public Schools responsibility, to figure out what happens when they walk through the door at kindergarten and do everything we can to help move them forward. But it's also a city and a community conversation that we need to have. And that, I think, has been the stem of what we're addressing here today, is looking at the conversation about, so where are we? What exactly are the challenges? Where is that manifested in our city? How can we, as an education system and a city and concerned members of our society or our community, work together to try to figure out how to address that? There's no predetermined focus for me in that conversation. It's really trying to identify the problem and then trying to figure out how to fix that problem. You know, one of the problems we have is sometimes people think, oh, well, this is an education issue. So that's the responsibility of Mesa Public Schools. And I would not disagree that it is certainly a concern of Mesa Public Schools, but it is a situation where we are not provided the resources through the state to provide, matter of fact, we're not allowed to provide and use our funds for early childhood education. So we rely on sparse grants that are out there, we rely on federal dollars for only special education-identified preschool children. And it would make sense, kind of like maybe what you've done through attracting so many post-secondary institutions to our system, that we'd look at an approach that potentially could bring in other partners to help us work with that. So that's our concern from the school system. I was really negligent in not introducing two of my colleagues here. We've got two wonderful individuals behind me. We have Dr. Barry from Queen Creek. He's right there. He's the superintendent of schools there. And we also have Dr. Thompson, who is the superintendent of Higley School District as well. Two of our neighbors to the south, who perhaps don't have the same demographic challenges that we do, but nevertheless value and understand the critical role that enriched early education experiences provide children as they come into their schools as well as into our schools.
Any questions? Mr. Richens?
Dr. Cowan, thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for coming this morning.
When did you grow your beard, Mr. Richens? You're like a young Colonel Sanders.
This is not an education issue. I am asking questions here.
All right. All right.
Took me a couple of months, but it's actually glued on.
Okay, good, good.
So my guess is that this situation is not unique to Mesa.
No.
Can you give me a couple of examples of what other communities have done to approach this issue and make some progress on it?
Sure, I can. I'll give you two examples that are viables. One example, and I'm not advocating for either of these, I think we need to explore how do we address this. One is San Diego. San Diego went through a very similar process to us to really analyze the system and the problems and the challenges that they face. And then they, as a community, went out and built a system to support providers of enriched early childhood to come in and set up shop and to seek what they can do that we oftentimes can't, and that's federal subsidies to be able to support those things, for those specific subpopulations of kids. So there's kind of a model, and it's somewhat parallel to perhaps what the city has done in inviting our post-secondary partners in to set up shop with support from federal funds. Then another example, you could look at San Antonio. San Antonio went through a very similar process. They then, as a city, collaborated and decided that this is a priority for us. We invest early so that we can benefit from it later on as an economic engine in our community. And they then worked through, with the school systems, with the universities, with nonprofit partners, with the business community, to build an infrastructure of support, especially for the early childhood individuals who don't have perhaps the opportunity for a tuition-based program in their community. So it's been done in other places. There are other states, I will tell you, not so much in the West, but much more so on the East, where the state legislature has said, we're going to own this, this is a concern of ours, and we're going to make sure that the state funds early childhood funding programs as well. That's not the current philosophy of the leadership in Phoenix. I don't foresee that happening in the near future. And so for that reason, I've been talking with the mayor about, hey, this is, this is on the horizon, and we really need to make sure that all of us are paying attention to this and providing supports as best we possibly can with what we have available to us. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Council member? Other questions for Dr. Cowan? Mr. Thompson?
Councilmember Thompson. You know, one of the things you mentioned right off, well, I guess there's two things. One of the things you mentioned right off was the poverty differential. And I'm not sure how we attack that.
Yeah.
But the other one is the summer slide, and I know that that's an issue that has faced school districts across the U.S. Is there, has there been a consideration of going to year-round school?
You know, we-
That would help eliminate that?
We do, using federal title dollars, we do provide supplemental educational experiences in the summer for those kids. We spend the month of June and a portion of July with them in a four-to-five-day summer school program, striving to help that. That does help some of the population. Those dollars are somewhat limited, and we can only get a certain subpopulation of kids, but we do offer that. We haven't looked at the extended school year like Utah and other states have done, because the state does not provide the compensation to run the school system. So you would say, we have a 180-day school year, the state funds us for 180 days. There is an opportunity of going about 20 days more, but basically, they say, use this much money and just stretch it out more, which would require substantive changes in the budget to be able to accomplish that. If there were a mechanism for us to do that, we would certainly take that under consideration. That's a great question.
Then wouldn't this then be a, more of a state-level issue in how schools are funded? You know, and with education being on the forefront right now, and it's in everybody's mind across-
Right.
-the whole entire state of Arizona, wouldn't this better be a task taken to our legislators and say, we need to fix education, not only how education is funded, but how the dollars funnel into our school districts across the entire state? Wouldn't that be a better fight?
I would agree that that is definitely a fight that we currently are fighting, just so you know. Matter of fact, I'll spend most of the day today downtown visiting with policymakers on education funding. My concern is this, and with all due respect to Councilmember Thompson, the current reality at the state is that they, while they speak to the importance of a quality education system, they do not foresee any funding increases of substance to be able to do what they need to do. And therefore, they are not engaged in any kind of conversation or even really an openness to consider options. I think what you'll see over the next several years is they're going to look at the funding formulas for the 180 days of school, and they'll be revising that. But extended services beyond that, including full-day kindergarten, that was a past legislative action that was reversed, that is no longer funded. We continue to fund it in Mesa Public Schools because it's really the best need for our students, especially with the academic expectations of the new curriculum. And there is really no concentrated attention to the early childhood work at the state level. So I agree with you. I think that would be a fabulous thing. Just knowing what I know and the projections coming from the Joint Legislative Budget Committee and projected revenues and all of those things that we track over multiple years, there is no foreseeable conversation in that area for the state. Their attention is on tax cuts, and those tax cuts amplify over time, and those tax cuts then have an impact on the budget. Nobody likes taxes, so that's why they focus there. And then that has an influence on the education system ultimately. But I don't disagree with what Mr. Thompson says.
Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Dr. Cowan. I appreciate your comments. I know you're pressed for time. You have another meeting.
I do, I do. And I really appreciate you, Vice Mayor Kavanaugh, letting me slip in here at the beginning so I can run off and go visit with my friends in Phoenix.
And thank you for what you do for our community. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
The City Council.
Thank you. And thank you for the time this morning.
Thank you very much. I also wanted to acknowledge Dr. Perry Berry from Queen Creek and Dr. Thompson from the Higley School District, and also Dr. Alexander Nardone, who is Chief of Staff, Representative Dr. Christine Kishimoto from the Gilbert School District. And also Sally Harrison, who's representing the Chamber of Commerce. She's in support of this initiative. So thank you all for attending.
I move that we accept the committee as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Council discussion? Ms. Richens?
Yeah, I, this is, I mean, I have young kids. I get it, my youngest is a first grader. So, and I get this issue, and you know, we have a whole shelves full of books, and read with the kids, and make them do Khan Academy and all that kind of online resources, all this fun stuff. You know, but sometimes it still like, it seems like it's still not enough. I think having this conversation is important at this time. You know, I don't know where it's going to go, I don't know how to fund it, I don't know any of those questions, but I know that we, I appreciate you sharing a couple of examples from other communities that have waded into this issue. And I agree, the legislature has no appetite for addressing this issue, and cities lead. And cities step up and they lead on the issues like this and have these conversations. And we might have to make some tough decisions, maybe something more, you know, maybe something will emerge that is easy to do. I doubt it. This is going to be a tough issue, but you know, I like the parallels between the post-secondary education initiatives that we've done, because we need to raise our educational attainment levels to attract high-school, high-wage employers. I mean, that's really what this is about. And, you know, getting them to college is one thing, getting them prepared for that inevitability is still another. And I know it's challenging, because you have so many people that move in and out of a community and come and go, and so will we end up preparing other school districts' children? Well, probably, you know, but I think that's part of what we owe to society. Again, this is going to be an interesting journey. I think I'm very interested in it, and I'm going to watch it very closely, and look forward to having a robust discussion on this topic. And just make sure these meeting minutes get to us real quick so we can keep up on how it's evolving. But appreciate you guys coming. Thank you.
Any further comments? Mr. Thompson?
You know, and I am very, very pro-education. And if you know me, you know, I've supported Queen Creek's override and bond election as well as Gilbert's. You know, I want to make sure that we're exercising caution, though, putting a committee together, because there could be things that come out of this committee, decisions that are made in this committee that are brought forward that could have a widespread detrimental impact on not only the city, but cities across Arizona as well as education. And so I just want to make sure that we're exercising caution that, as a city, we're not crossing that line between what our responsibilities are to our citizens and what our roles are as elected officials and what is really the responsibility of the education community. Outside of that, absolutely 100% I'm on board. I think there's resources that the city has available that we can absolutely offer. I couldn't think of anybody better from the city side to be on the committee than Mr. Luna. So, you know, I'm on board with the city joining your committee.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed and the motion carries, and best of luck to you and colleagues on the task force. We'll look forward to the reports. All right. Next item on our agenda is to review the agenda for the November 23rd council meeting. So we have items 3A through 3D, which are liquor license applications. Looks like Fountain of the Sun is going to be very active. He'll be there. Items 3E through 3J?
Just real quick.
Ms. Richens?
Per, I noticed that the Fries Marketplace store 686 is getting a Series 7 and a Series 9 liquor license. Could somebody come up and explain the difference between those two and why both is necessary? Not that I have an issue, but I think it's a good educational opportunity to understand a little bit about-
Right.
... these different series liquor licenses.
For those following us, it's item 3I.
Yeah, wasn't real clear in the report.
Problem? Good morning, Mayor, Councilmember Richens. Series 7 is a beer and wine license. Series 9 is a liquor store license. Series 9 allows you to sell the liquor so that it can go outside of the store. Series 7 would allow you to have the liquor inside the store. And Fries is starting to do some mini bars inside of their stores. So if you're going to serve alcohol for consumption inside the store, you need a Series 7 to do that.
Okay.
Well, it's one of the licenses that would work, and that's the license they chose to go for. So that's why you have the two licenses. The Series 9 license with a sampling privilege allows you to do the samples, but you can't serve and consume the alcohol above the amount that you're allowed to on the sampling with just a 9S license. So that's why Fries is looking for a Series 7 and a Series 9 in this case.
Okay, thank you. In the future, to the staff reports, Carrie, could we add just, I mean, there's a lot of detail in those that talks about proximity and crime reports, all that stuff. Just add a, if they're going for a Series 7 license, add a definition to what a Series 7 license is. I couldn't find that in there.
Sure, not a problem.
And I know that'll be routine after a while, but you know, once you have a template for it, it's easy to do.
You got it, not a problem.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Great, great idea. Okay, item 3K, that's the last of the liquor license, and we move into contracts. Page four, it's item 4A. And items 4B through 4D, 4E and 4F, 4G through 4I. Ms. Richens?
Sorry, I'm chatterbox today. This is an, I was interested in the purchase of these two SUVs, Chevys. I hadn't seen us buy Fords before. Does anybody can maybe speak to, we're getting, and then the Fords were substantially less expensive than the Chevys, which piqued my interest as well. And thank you for adding the detail also on the report about the outfit costs, which I thought was also interesting, that the Fords had more outfit costs. Just kind of walk us through these two items side by side on this agenda thing. Great mustache, by the way, Pete. I really like it. You're looking very-
You can see my inspiration now.
Again, for those following along, these are items 4G and 4H. Thanks.
Good morning, Vice Mayor. Good morning, Council, Councilmember Richens. What we have is, as you know, several years ago, we started to convert to the Tahoe SUV police package. And what we're doing here is we're bringing in several Ford police interceptors to start testing those. They'll be joining the fleet. And you made some good comments about pricing. And of course, we buy these Fords, in a lot of cases, from a local vendor, which is very nice also. So these are the first of the Ford police interceptors that will be coming into the fleet. We'll probably have about six by the time we're done, and then they'll be evaluated alongside the Chevrolet Tofos.
Ms. Richens?
Councilmember Richens, these two Fords also, as part of the intent is to diversify the fleet. These two are unmarked vehicles. They'll be assigned to our detectives. So rather than eight detectives all having the same car, especially if they're doing surveillance, we wanted some diversity in the vehicles as well, so it wasn't always the same thing.
Great, you just gave it away. Come on. Got a clean ear.
It'll be our secret.
These are the same vehicles that DPS uses?
They are.
I've seen them in my rearview mirror from time to time.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yes.
So they're not getting the full paint, the-
For these two vehicles, no.
Not these two.
But we do have others that we are ordering, and I think we did that a few sessions ago.
Okay, so they won't have the light bar on top?
These two won't.
Okay, all right, that's why it's cheaper for the outfit costs.
Right. But we do have some Ford interceptors that will be marked that were previously approved by council, that we will be testing those out.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Items 4J through 4L, items 4M through 4O, and more contracts. And then the last contract was item 4P. We move into resolutions. We have 5A through 5C. I just want to comment, I appreciate the staff on 5B moving ahead. You remember that council a number of years ago moved to approve us working on a quiet zone program throughout the community, as a number of other communities have done. It's taken a lot of staff work and time to do this. And so I understand we received approval from the authorities at B to move ahead with it, and so I appreciate this.
I do think we have one more step in the process, Lenny. We still need to go through the Corporation Commission, so we're working with the railroad, but they need to see that this approval first, and then it will go on to the Corporation Commission, so for their review before. That's, I think, the final approval we need, so.
Right. I think it's very encouraging news, I think, for our residents. We've been very patient. Thank you. Okay, item 6, we're ordinances, 6A, 6B.
It's my last one, I promise.
Ms. Richens?
6B, is Lindsay Shuby here by chance? No? I just-
Is she here?
She is. There she is. Welcome back.
She's hiding in the back.
Last time it wasn't as pleasant of an experience for her, but hopefully it'll be more pleasant this time.
I thought Sean Lake only got to come up here. Every time I'm here, Sean Lake gets up.
I really appreciate seeing this item on here, because this is the concept that we talked about when we denied the permit for the medical marijuana dispensary, a more wholesale revitalization of the site, you know, something that is a little bit more thought through and planned. I really, really appreciate seeing that. I did need to confirm, though, that this isn't, I understand the zoning category does not allow for medical marijuana dispensaries or cultivation.
That's correct.
So the other thing that I found that is interesting about the way this site is situated and the parking, I noticed our parking- situated and the parking, I noticed our parking ratios dropped just a little bit. But it's one of the few properties along Main Street that has a grade-separated access drive, I guess for lack of a better word, from Main Street. And was wondering if part of the plan included on-street parking or more organized parallel parking or something to add to the parking, because it looked like there was two options. One was up on the street, which sometimes can be scary for retailers, and usually you just get a backwards building when you do it that way. You know, but, you know, the other option was back. And I don't know that I'm particularly wedded to either one, you know, let that be up to the applicant. But I wanted to throw out that concept of including on-street parking in that area to help facilitate, you know, lower parking ratios and more building ratios, so.
Right. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Richens, that is part of the concept here, that we do recognize while we have that extra street, it's not really used that much, and so on-street parking is possible and can work towards their parking requirements.
In parallel or angle?
Not sure exactly how much room we have. We'll evaluate that when a formal site plan comes through.
Historically, they've done parallel parking along that strip, but it seems that there's enough room to do angled parking if they're allowed to come in.
And we've also talked about the option with that short stretch where you have that extra Main Street, that that's not necessarily needed as a street.
Right.
And could potentially be vacated back to the property owner so they can make more full use of it.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks for thinking through those issues. So congratulations. This is excellent to see this moving forward.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Councilman Finter. He really stood by the applicant, and you know, I had a different applicant before. Now, working with the property owner, and he was very... He stood by us to make sure that this property owner had options. She's owned it since 1970, and so she has options for redevelopment, so.
Yeah, shortly after the last vote, I was out doing neighborhood visits and went actually to her neighborhood. She lives in my district. And I got an earful.
I'm sure you did.
But I kind of laid out why we were thinking that what we were thinking, and she kind of got it. So Ellis, way to go. Thank you.
She'll be here on December 1st, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, that completes our review for Monday's agenda. Next item, we'll hear a presentation discuss from Friday direction on the proposed home open application process. Ms. Morales will lead that discussion.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and members of the council. I thank you for this opportunity to seek your direction on how we want to structure the application process for the home program. There's two items for your consideration. First, staff's proposal to changing the application process from an annual process to an open process, which we'll go into more detail. The second, we are seeking your consensus on the approved amounts and timeline on the application process. I've asked Ray Timish, who's the development project coordinator, to provide us some context on this issue.
Give you a little overview on the home program. It is basically used to provide safe, decent, affordable housing. And typically, these home dollars are used to fill gaps in financing of that particular housing. Has a wide range of uses associated with housing. Can be used for homeownership, rental housing, rehabilitation of existing homeowners, and rental assistance, as well as down payment assistance to home buyers. Nationally, every home dollar that we put out leverages about four additional dollars in private financing. And our current allocation this year is $932,000. We anticipate a slight increase for next year's allocation as well. Last year, we held a single annual application process where we had an open date and a closed date. And this year, we're proposing to kind of do an open round. Basically, all year round, this application process will be open. However, it also depends on our funding and when we get it. This allows us to do a number of things that we have not been able to do in the past, and Liz will get into that in more detail. Right now, we have, with this year, our open application will have a deadline. The deadline we're setting is for the low-income housing tax credit applications, because there is a deadline they have for their application process. And that current deadline is December 21st. So we'll be closing all applications for low-income housing tax credits at that point. The activities, again, going back to some of those activities typically use tenant-based rental assistance, homeowner, existing homeowner rehabilitation, homeownership, down payment assistance, closing cost assistance. And we get into the bricks and mortar. It can be used for the development of rental housing and residential housing. And typically, these are loans given to the home buyers or developers.
I think Ms. Richens has a question.
Right. I just want to confirm that you can't use home for brick-and-mortar ownership housing. It's only...
You can't.
You can use...
You can do new construction with that.
For...
Single family.
Non-rental, single family.
Yeah, single family, multifamily.
Have we not included that in our plan?
Yes, it is included. Typically, what we have...
I just didn't see it on the brick-and-mortar side, so that's why I asked.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
No worries.
But yeah, it can be used for single family as well. A good example of that is Habitat for Humanity has built a lot of projects on vacant parcels out there. It's just that the vacant parcels that are available, usually these are infilled lots, aren't always as plentiful, and some of the homeowners or, excuse me, some of the property owners that own those parcels aren't always willing to sell.
New construction only or acquisition rehab?
It can actually be for existing homes. So they can use it for acquisition of existing homes, rehabilitate those, and put them for resale again for income-qualified buyers.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Turn it back over to Liz.
So as we discuss what the advantages are of this open process, I want to discuss a little of the items here that are bulleted. On the funding, we believe a majority of the requests are going to come under our first review process because of the low-income tax credit. And so we believe that the majority of those projects will come in. But should any of those projects not be successful, having an open process will allow us to reallocate those funds quickly to any new projects that come through the application process. It also allows us the flexibility to allocate funds to worthy projects that may not be ready until, under a normal annual process, they may not have been prepared to submit an application. Also, we would... This open process really would allow us to improve the use of staff resources by ensuring that they have adequate time to evaluate projects, to do the underwriting that is required, to ensure we're conforming both with the home rules, the city's consolidated plan, and analysis of impediments. Finally, to be able to be responsive to developers is really important as they bring a significant amount of investment into our community. So we want to be able to be flexible and responsive to our developers. And we know that developers spend a significant amount of time upfront with the plannings, preparing the financing, so that they can submit their applications. So having an open process allows them to save some time on materials and labor, as well as land acquisition costs, by being able to act any time during the year, rather than waiting for the next application process. So just to give you a few of the tidbits on our timeline, we would come to you in February 11th, actually to the CCD Board, and then final approval on February 25th. I think the one highlight I want to make is that in the past, when we had an open process, it did not allow for a council to have final approval. Under this model, councils have an ability to evaluate the projects and make those funding recommendations. If there's any submittals after the first round, we will evaluate that based on the council's priorities and what funding is available, and also then submit it to you once we've identified if it meets the requirements. So here's our request. Change that to an open application process, opening November 30th with a close date of December 21st, and approving the amounts that we list here under tenant-based rental assistance, which provides utility and move-in deposits, homeownership, which does the acquisition and rehabilitation and resale of homes through our certified housing development organizations. And then the funding of these two activities can also be modified when we bring all the projects back to you, should you choose to move some funding around. So that is our recommended changes.
Mr. Thompson?
I have a question on the last slide.
Yes.
And you know the question. It seems to me like there would be more stability in the community if more of the dollars were reallocated from rental housing to homeownership. Personally, I would prefer to see those numbers flop, where maybe the rental housing is the $238 and the homeownership is the $500,000, because I think for a community, you know, we would want people to own their own homes and feel safe and comfortable in their own homes versus rental. So why are those numbers the way they are?
Yes, and thank you, Councilman Thompson, for your question. I think it's a very valid question to understand historically kind of where we were at. At one time, we did significant funding for homeownership, and then we've taken some time off. Some of it has to do with the change in home rules, but we did not have what's called a CHODO, Community Housing Development Organization, to be able to administer these funds, which is required by the federal rules, that those funds have to be operated and administered by a certified housing development organization. So we have, in the past, allocated $600,000 last year, but we had to sort of be able to go through the certification process. So those CHODOs are almost up and running. We're almost at the point where they can start utilizing the funds from the previous fiscal year, but we have concerns that they will not be able to spend all those funds and this $238 in time for us to meet our funding deadlines that are required by HUD. So we do want to turn the ship, but it's a slow turn towards homeownership. And we know with the rental development, you know, those projects often need more money than some of the homeownership. But we can, you know, council can definitely make those determinations as we are better prepared to spend those funds on the homeownership. But at this point, we don't really foresee them able to spend that money in order for us to meet our funding commitments.
So it's more of a timing issue, trying to get everything up and running versus allocation?
Right.
And I'd just like to comment on the home money that's given to the homeownership program. That's money, once they do the acquisition or rehabilitation, they do the resale. So the home buyer's actually buying it. So that's money that comes back into that homeownership program. It's kind of like the NSP program, where we took $9 million and turned it into $15 million. So it's constantly revolving, excuse me, and going back out there. So it will continue, and we'll still have that going. We also are working with two CHODOs. We had two CHODOs applications last year. We made a decision, because we had never worked with either one of those. Both have great credentials, but we haven't worked with any of them. And I think Richens proposed, at that time, Councilmember Richens proposed a little competition, you might say. And let's give $300,000 to each one, and let's see how they do. And that's what we're proposing to do here, and we're working on it.
Ms. Richens?
Yeah, I'm really excited to see this. We've been kind of working on this concept for three years. The members of the committee have known that we're trying to get more of a market-driven approach to the home funding, because in the past, people would apply for a fourplex, they'd get a lot of cash, and they'd just go spend it all because they could. And so this kind of drives a little bit more economics into the deal and makes our money stretch a little farther. So I'm really excited to see that we've been able to navigate the complicated HUD rules, those federal fund rules are absurd at times, to figure out how to do this. And so kudos to your team to have figured that out. The other compliment I want to dish out on this is the capacity building that your team has undertaken with various nonprofits to help prepare those nonprofits to be able to interact with federal funds more efficiently and successfully, because it's not an easy path to go on. And so I know several members of your team, and I know Dennis is here, have been out working with many of the nonprofits. And I just want to express my sincere appreciation for that interaction, because it helps us be more successful and stay out of hot water with HUD, and it also helps them achieve their program goals, which is a great combination, so.
Agreed. Thank you for that comment, Council.
Mr. Barber?
I want to thank Councilmember Richens and his lead on the CCD committee for taking up this issue. I think this is a great idea. I'm very supportive. I appreciate the flexibility and the creativity of the plan to allow for the, during the whole year, to be accessible instead of just one small time period. So thank you for the work of your staff.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to approve the staff recommendations. Moved and seconded by everybody, it looks like. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, the motion carries. Okay, next item is information on job order contracting projects. And Council, I have to tell you that Ms. Hunning gave me a very good explanation of what climbing boulders are, because I couldn't quite figure that out since they were coming to my district, and I kept thinking we're buying rocks. But they're climbing structures that will provide much entertainment and amusement for users, apparently, according to Ms. Hunning. So stay tuned, and when they're installed at Rancho Del Mar, we'll invite you to all come down and go boulder-climbing with me. Are there any other questions on the job order contracts? All right. Okay. Now we hear reports on meetings or conferences attended. Mr. Luna?
I want to echo Dr.'s comments and also congratulate our next Mesa Citizen of the Year. It's actually 2015 Mesa Man of the Year, Vice Mayor Dennis Kavanaugh.
Well, I've joined that group of people who have had groups, strange groups of people banging on your door at 7:00 in the morning on Saturdays, so.
It used to be at midnight, and I think it was on New Year's Eve, so.
Yeah, midnight on New Year's Eve. Well, at least I was up, so I did not have a heart attack or stroke. So with a strange group of people banging on my door. Thank you very much. I'd also like to recognize that my colleague in that honor is Dr. Joe Benza, a wonderful person, longtime employee at Mesa Public Schools. So thank you very much. Any other reports on meetings or conferences attended? I just want to thank everybody who's worked on the game night. We had 82 parties throughout the city, and all those block captains and neighborhood folks put the parties on. We appreciate that. Police staff and volunteers who worked to coordinate it. It was a very nice evening and a great turnout, and increase of block parties over last year. So that's... And Ms. Finter, I know you were out as Chair of Public Safety. Any special thoughts on that evening?
Wonderful. Appreciate all the hard work.
Great. I was sure it was you in the helicopter that was hovering over one of the block parties I was at, keeping track of me.
Spotlight was dimmer.
Ah, that's right. Okay, scheduling of meetings and general information.
We have a number of events going on this Saturday. First, we have the Falcon Warburg's Pancake Breakfast over at Falcon Field, the fly-in and classic car show from 8:00 to 11:00 over in the Falcon Warburg's hangar at Falcon Field. MAC Fest is going on this Saturday, McDonald and Main, from 10:00 to 4:00. And then also, in preparation for our grand opening for Mary Main Street, Arizona Feastable, which is our promoter and organizer of our food trucks, is going to have a soft opening this Saturday from 5:30 to 9:00 at Pioneer Park of our Jack Frost Food Truck Forest. So come on out. It's, they're going to be testing out the electrical system, the lights and so forth in preparation for the grand opening that will happen for Mary Main Street the following Friday on November 27th. So we invite you all, the community, to come out and help us test out traffic flow parking and all that kind of stuff before the big event the following Friday. And then, as you all know, Mary Main Street is back in downtown Mesa on Friday, November 27th to January 3rd. We are having the kickoff of the holiday season, a tree lighting ceremony that will be at 5:45 on the corner of McDonald and Main. And then the Winter Wonderland Ice Skating Rink, which is being built as we speak, will open up at 7:00 PM on that evening. So go to marymainstreet.com, and you'll see the hours of the rink opening, of all the things that are happening over at the MAC, Santa's Marketplace, and the hours of our Jack Frost Food Truck Forest. Say that five times. So come on out also for our residents. We've worked with Valley Metro. And during the holiday season, you'll be able to go from Country Club to Center to Mesa Drive stations, all free of charge. You can just hop on the light rail, because that's kind of the focus of where all the festivities are going on on Mary Main Street, so you can ride for free all at those three stations, so.
I think the hours for that would be, what, 5:00 to 10:00 for the fare-free zone?
Um, I apologize. I don't, yeah, I don't have that. I don't have that. But we'll put that out on the website as well on Mary Main Street, on when you can use those. I thought, I won't say. I thought it was during the hours, but we'll see if there's specific hours for that. Yeah.
This is actually, and Council, this is a pilot that we're partnering with Valley This is actually, and Council, this is a pilot that we're partnering with Valley Metro on, because a number of Valley cities have expressed ideas to have fare-free zones for various special events they want to, they want to do. And so we appreciate Valley Metro rail staff for working with us to create this fare-free zone. So it makes it easy for people to park if they want it, the Mesa Drive Park and Ride, and then come down for all the other events.
Yep, absolutely.
The other thing I wanted to mention is Friday night is one of the finales for Mesa Community College's 50th anniversary. And so lots of celebrations will be going on that evening, again, including yours truly being blindfolded and trying to hit a pinata, so.
Oh, okay. What time is that?
I'm not going to disclose that time, but it's, I'll be, oh, you, Mr. Luna's going to do it too?
Okay.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure for vertically challenged people, they lower the pinata a little bit. We have a chance, I mean, Dr. Penn and Mr. Luna and I are all going after the pinata. Let's hope they lower the basketball hoops for that one.
Good, good. Well, we look forward to that.
And then the Rose Garden there is in full bloom this fall. They're hosting, actually, the Southwestern, I like, Rose Society, big convention is coming to Mesa, lots of, lots of visitors coming. And so Friday and Saturday, it'll be, it's a great place to be on Mesa Community College's campus and help celebrate their 50th anniversary.
Mr. Richens? Just real quick, Mesa Music Fest last weekend. I don't think we've met since that event. You know, we went a little bit on Friday night. It was really fun seeing Kerry Kemp, the groupie.
I love music. I love music, all kinds of music.
My ears quit ringing after the screaming after a while.
And we had the lead singer of Fuel that was there.
And I still have no idea who that is.
It was, it was a big deal for Mesa. It was absolutely a big deal. No, it was a very...
How did it turn out on Saturday? How did the whole event?
It was, it was a great event. Again, this was run by, not the city, but an organizer. And we certainly helped in any way we could in promoting this event. We had a number of people here all day long. It was from about 12 PM, it opened up on Saturday, all the way to 12 midnight. I was here for 10 hours of those. It was, it was great. All of the restaurants were just completely packed. And there was music all the way from around Center, all the way to Country Club, with different stages and so forth.